Like, why? Why limit to agencies?
I don't think we need to either, but.
No, no, it was, it was more of, that became more critical where the money is, if that makes sense.
Right, okay.
I don't, I don't.
There's a separate process. So there is a sustainability fund that we have for organizations to apply. So this is not substituting that. This is saying, these are projects that are more, as going back to Ben's earlier slide, that are transformational, that are on the public facilities, are more urban facing, so that city would be more of a natural project delivery partner.
Believe it or not, I have, I have, I've written a motion that might have most of this. My only problem is I'm not connected to the meeting, so I can't share it easily. But when it gets to that point, if you want to hear something, I got it.
Don't leave us hanging.
Well, yeah, that is, that is.
That's pretty lame. I did send it to Robin just in case. Okay. I should have written it down and walked it over then.
Needs to X out of that box.
The other thing that history wise that is probably good to know is, and Kevin, correct me if I have the history wrong, because this was a prior council that made all these litigation decisions. Given our change to the RT RT city laws, this money would have been spent on promotion had the city not held it back during the course of a lawsuit.
Majority of it, I think the last year, two years would have been.
The bulk of it would have gone to promoting tourism and.
Like come to Ben.
Yes.
Come visit.
Then comes, you know, stay in hotels. You've done an excellent, I think, everybody agrees, Visit Ben has done a great job on promotion, promoted successfully. As we're required to do by law. So I don't think there's any loss. In my mind, there's no loss to the industry by the fact that this could have only been spent on promotion and promotion was an A plus. This, I think, gives us an opportunity to look forward, like how Visit Ben has already decided to spend TRT dollars more on facilities. That's new, under the most recent contract. That's, I just, I just want us to be mindful of the fact that even though you were set back by this lawsuit, that the mission of Visit Ben wasn't harmed. I mean, I, in my mind, you did a great job anyway.
There's the motion, which, you wanted to scroll? There's a few.
Nope.
I'm just, I'm always sort of like, how do we take, you know, it's a small group, some of these ideas and move them forward. So maybe, Megan, to your point, you could add some language to say with the idea of, you know, evaluating kind of a long-term relation, like maybe for this, since we're talking about a discrete project here with a geographic area, doesn't make sense to move the money back and forth, but what we want to do is have Visit Ben right here at the table is working with council to scope this project. And then maybe tip our hat to like longer term, there might be something worth working on at Visit Ben. And you could put that in the motion too, just sort of as, as a way.
Is that enough of a, like a structure? I mean, is, is, okay.
And this doesn't, it doesn't limit it to public agencies only, but with a focus on public spaces.
Yeah.
To Counselor Mitchell's point.
Yeah, I don't know. I don't know why I'm stuck on that. I'm just, I'm just sort of, I think the wider the lens, the better. Often, like, public agencies do things really well, but other, other agencies have different specialties and they do things really well. Absolutely. Agencies aren't as strong in. So I'm just sort of like, that's how I think about things.
When you say long-term, when both of you are talking about long-term relationship, in my mind, there is the, the money going forward is all going through the sustainability fund. This is just this one time. I mean, are you tired?
Well, I was, I was thinking you might, as a, if we really want to be on this path of transformative projects, and also I, I would maybe narrow it to kind of your point, Counselor Mitchell, like, if it's city in there, if it's work in the right, really making that, that distinction, right, is to say for those tourism-related facilities that are in public rights of way, that then it's more defined, right? And saying from, from a long-term perspective, you know, as we look towards some other goals that we might have, that where there might be a nexus, that might be some things that we might want to think about long-term in terms of, and not just using cash, but using a debt sort of arrangement and things like that. So I just want to make sure that we leave that door open for that type of relationship.
And that would be in, that would involve like an amendment to our.
That would be an amendment to the contract and to probably, and it would be something we would do annually through the visit band, or we have that mechanism in place to approve the business plan. So.
Critically, that's not happening at this point.
No.
Yeah. This motion seems fine to me.
Very cool.
Yeah, well, I'm, I'm realizing I forgot to put the Plaza area, but I think it, Brooks Promenade area and North Mirapon Lot area kind of covers it. It's, area helps, so.
Maybe Brooks Promenade slash, that's actually not called Brooks Plaza, right? It's called.
It's not. I think it's called the Mirapon Plaza, but.
Can you edit that, Robin? I don't know if you will be able to. Or if you just put it in a Word document and then we can. And then I, I was putting a proposal out there. If you wanted to add some language that talked about maybe a longer-term relationship, that's an option. That's for your consideration, just getting some ideas.
I think that we can say that and continue to have conversations about it with Visit Ben rather than put it in this motion, because this is pretty confined to this money that is a one-time.
Sure.
As we do that, you know, when will you be back for your business plan?
It's April, May.
Yeah, so we can have that conversation then, maybe.
And then I think what we'd probably want to do is commit to a couple of months, we'd come back here with the scope of, you know, really talking with Visit Ben about, okay, now we know this geographic area here would be the, the proposal that this subcommittee would say, yep, that looks right. And then that would allow us to then put it into our project management regime, or a sort of cycle, I guess. And then, then the contract would come before the full council for building.
I think it'd be helpful for me just to know, like, where, what are, what's expected of Visit Ben under this arrangement. I think I have a little, tackles in my neck are going up a little bit just because of the Drake Park process that we are supposed to be a part of. And I think we could have been super helpful in that process, and we're not exactly at the table through that, so.
Yeah.
That's why I asked the question about structure.
And we should be transparent. We've worked even up till like Thursday or Friday to try to work with the parks, where Ben Park and Rec. And it, it, it didn't happen. So, you know, we've heard loud and clear downs for tourists, restrooms, public restrooms downtown are very important, and a, and a larger tourism infrastructure is important. It's important to support the businesses who are serving tourists. And we just weren't able to get there with Park and Rec using this revenue, so. I'm mindful of the need for structure also.
So is there a motion that will be going to council as well to affirm this? Because I'm just thinking, is this something we can take this and then actually flesh something out?
So it, I, I honestly, I think that's up to the subcommittee. This is giving staff some direction to go start doing some work with Visit Ben that's going to come back to the subcommittee and the council. I don't know that it's really necessary to then, to your, if we were talking about a contract amendment, I'd be saying you're making a recommendation, you're moving to take that up with the full council. You're moving the process forward and the results of that process are going to come back here and then to the council. I don't think this really requires any further council action at this step, if you don't want, or don't see the need to incorporate that, because the decision-making will happen later with council.
I agree, but I don't know that we have another subcommittee meeting scheduled.
They're usually every other month.
I think we canceled November because of Thanksgiving, right?
Yeah, and, and I think with the new council, the next one will be with the new council.
But I don't, I would like to.
We could try for one in December, in between the holidays. Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm fine with this as long as when we do come back in December or whenever, we have a real strict set of sort of how this process is going to go down, a structure is going to go down beyond just like, hey, let's call Kevin every couple of months and check in about this, right? Like, I'm fine with it, as long as, as long as that's what happens.
Okay.
So, yeah, two questions on that. I mean, my view of Visit Ben's role is to formally say, when we take a project to them, we say, we, we're confident this is a tourism-related facility. We want you to be confident also and formally let us know. I don't want to move forward with any projects where Visit Ben isn't comfortable. I mean, we could, but that would be a decision for council. And I guess the second question is, when you say you're coming back to stewardship, what will that be? Will that be a project, a schedule?
To me, it would be the, the scoping. What are the elements that we want to include in? Because we'll, we'll have to go and design this work. So this would be, this is where we would start to involve a project manager from our capital delivery group. And so they would be there, we would probably have some prep meetings with Visit Ben first to say, this is what we're thinking. And my, my goal would be to have a record, so we're alongside with Visit Ben and our project delivery folks saying, here is the scope, and getting a kind of a nod from the subcommittee at that.
Okay.
That works.
Yeah, I mean, I envisioned Visit Ben as the intake for this, right? That, so if another agency comes to the city and says, I want to build, you know, some, something within the core of the EID that I think is a tourism-related facility, Visit Ben is the first stop, right? Versus having a bunch of conversations with, with us.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll, I'll back that point up. I mean, the, the rate of success when we're involved in ideation phase.
Yeah.
Is far better.
Right.
So even as we're talking about North Mirapon and Brooks Plaza, the sooner we're engaged, engage our partners in that, far better than at the 11th dollar.
Yeah, not just go to Visit Ben to get a box checked, right? I mean, that's not how I'm envisioning this at all.
Right. So I think we've got the direction that we need. I think the motion, did you want to make any other changes to the motion, Robin? And do you want to throw that up there? And it'd be nice to have that executed.
I don't have my glasses on. It's really.
You're screwed. You can't see.
Allocating the approximately 2.4 million in tourism facility funding for tourist-related facilities, projects in partnership and a reliance on Visit Ben to review project proposals, focusing on projects in the downtown district and core urban renewal area with an emphasis on the Brooks Promenade area, the North Mirapon Lot area, I'm sorry, the Brooks Promenade slash Plaza area, the North Mirapon Lot area, Northwest Minnesota Avenue and Hawthorne Ave, with the intent to begin qualifying projects as quickly as possible. Project proposals will come back to the subcommittee and the council for final approval.
Oh, yeah.
Seconds.
Yeah.
Great.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks. Thanks, Kevin. Thanks, Ben.
The, the next item is an outdoor shelter contract update, and I believe this item is scheduled to come before council on October 5th. So we thought just for expediency using the subcommittee to make sure that we're on tracking and therefore we can get an efficient kind of move to the next phase of the council meeting.
Look at the back of your head in the camera. Like, I feel like, you know, sometimes front is okay, and then you see the back of the head and it's a whole different thing to worry about. And hello, Council and Lynn McConnell, your Housing Director for Stewardship Subcommittee, I should say, and here with Amy Fraley, our Houseless Services Manager. And we just wanted to kick this off and give you all a little bit of an update. We have been working hard to ensure that this topic is ready for you at your next meeting and just sort of wanted to give you a little hint about what's coming. You will have a decision in front of you when we are there in October. So this is really just sort of update, opportunity to ask questions and, and dive into the details a little bit further. With that, and we may have to do some sort of power switch-ups depending on how everybody's laptop is doing momentarily.
Are you okay?
Be okay. I think we should be okay.
Good motivation to go quick.
And I'm struggling with the classes as well. As you may remember, this has been quite a process. There was a request for qualifications that was sent more than a year ago in July. And then we did a request for proposals almost a year ago. There was an intent to award to Central Oregon Villages who did respond with two proposed outdoor shelter options. And this is the first, the other one, I believe, was for six units. And so we awarded, or the city council awarded Phase One in June, and they have been diligently working to gather feedback from the community. Very instrumental in that has been the NLA. And they have secured the site and are looking forward to bringing a full report to the council along with a Phase Two contract amendment in October. So this is designed to be the 1.5 million dollars from ARPA, 750 from the city, and then 750 from the county. And folks may remember, it's on the corner of Bear Creek and 27th. They did bring a better map up there, and that's the Surf Car Wash there up on the corner. And this is, oh, sorry. The total amount from the county and from.
Yeah, sorry. I was just trying to remember.
I, I am guessing that's what you were chatting about. We each have contributed 1.5.
Yeah.
Half of that is being used for this project.
Thank you.
Yeah, yeah, sorry.
Is that, is that what you?
Yes, that's exactly what I said.
Yeah.
And I apologize. I should have read that out and been clearer. Sorry, Amy.
All good.
Thank you.
And so, folks may have seen the site. It is Desert Stream Church, Desert Streams. I keep saying that wrong. Central Oregon Villages is leasing the property directly from the church, which was not the original intent. We thought the city would be leasing it, but we were excited that they were able to secure that themselves. And it's in the Larkspur neighborhood. And totaled, there's 3.87 acres there. And then what I brought forward up there is the design for the actual village. You'll see that there are, there's a couple of different views just further out. And right there on 27th, and it's kind of up in the corner of the original lot. So you'll see the 20 pallet shelters is what they're proposing. Shower truck, food pantry, all sorts of good stuff.
What are the green things? Are those?
Green, green line. Oh, yeah. Those, those are picnic tables.
Picnic table.
Yes. Community gathering space. We did explore bringing sewer in. It's not practical in that location. And so you see that there are porta-potties there. Family Kitchen will be bringing meals in once a day. And we're going to hopefully be bringing water in directly to the sites.
City water.
City water, yeah. And tapping into existing power.
And I see representative dwelling unit, meaning there's someone there.
Yes. One of the many opportunities that Central Oregon Villages took to incorporate feedback was having somebody there onsite. Initially, it was on-call management. Now they will have somebody that is available 24, 24/7 and can answer questions and be trained. Some highlights from their report, they, door-to-door, more than 200 households. They went to NLA twice, Larkspur meetings. They had an open house and did the Good Neighbor Agreement in conjunction with that. And more than 50 people showed up from the neighborhood. And so they have gone on and presented to Rotary Clubs and really done a nice shop. They went to the fair for three days and tried to talk to people there about the work that they're trying to do. So it, they have been diligent with their process and with their volunteers. If I'm secured the site and the design has been refined, getting the lease done was quite a challenge. It's the reason that it has taken so long to bring it back to the council, but it is in place. And on the website today, Shelley has put in that application has been received. So we are hopefully ready to move forward on the 5th.
Do, do you have any sense of how, I'm, I'm just curious, like, how the shelters are being, like, heated and cooled? I'm just, they look small and hot.
They are. They, they do have electric and. And the snow load is pretty impressive as well. I mean, they look like
Yeah.
a more standardized idea of what something in a shed might look like, but they're much better designed, they're registered.
And Counselor, I think we had extensive discussions internally with staff in our Building Division, Engineering, et cetera, to determine, do we need to build in checkpoints to ensure that these shelters are still in good shape? That's not something we would be able to do under a traditional, you know, House Bill 2006 application, but because of this contracting process, we have a little bit more ability to really try to follow up. And after long discussions and a lot of background research by our Building Division, they feel like they've seen them work in other places. It's holding up well to the elements. We will always be involved, but with sort of the timeline that we are looking at for this site, internally, nobody felt like there needed to be additional checks or, or sort of additional strategy to ensure that they held up well. We feel like they're well-built from what we know and have been holding up well elsewhere. And that will be continually, I think, Amy and, and the team's job.
Sort of like audited and checked in on.
Continuing to be habitable and comfortable and dignified, frankly, for, for these folks. So, yeah.
I will say another design element that was refined was they were planning to do some kind of chain link fencing in both the neighborhood and the church community was like, absolutely, that is not what we want to see out there. We wanted to fit into the neighborhood as far as aesthetics. And so there has been support and pricing has been adjusted in that area as well. This is a three-year contract that's being prepared. And so we ought to be out there quite a bit checking it out.
Have they decided sort of how people will be selected? Is it a certain sort of demographic group or?
They're going to go with coordinated entry combined with their knowledge of the community. They've been working with the safe parking sites at the Methodist Church.
Oh, yeah.
And so they do feel as though the population that they know that there's several older or elderly medically fragile women that they would like to prioritize to put in to.
And there's entry requirements.
Yeah. This is a high barrier shelter. Another element that they have incorporated into the program now is that they will be doing testing onsite versus just saying that there are no drugs and alcohol on testing initially. That'll be something that is ongoing.
You have more slides?
Yeah. So up to 20 pallet shelters prioritizing women and children. They're going to use coordinated entry, as we mentioned, portable toilets and water stations, daily delivery from Family Kitchen, one meal, and then they'll also have a food pantry. And they've coordinated service through the mobile shower truck. It's an abstinence rule from drug and alcohol use might live in there in the shelter. Like I said, they will be doing randomized testing, and you must participate in case management. There will be some chores or duties that are assigned to operate and be at the shelter, and those will be ongoing.
I guess one, one thought I'm just having is making sure whoever's the staff onsite, like, making sure that the word woman is, is inclusive.
Inclusive.
That, and making sure people have enough training around like the trans community as well, and making sure that this is not just a binary way of thinking about who a woman is.
Thank you.
Yeah. How many, it says it's going to prioritize children too. How many people can fit in? One of these pallets?
Two, okay. They need to purchase some additional pallet shelters depending on where the budget is. They would like to look at buying some larger units as well instead of just
Yeah.
the max of two. Prices have gone up. Construction, as everybody knows really well, the grading alone has skyrocketed. So it really will be budget dependent there. Right now, their budget's at, I think, 1.38 is what they're submitting. And so we'll see if there's flexibility and if they choose to prioritize that, but they definitely would be interested.
That's great.
That's great.
Thank you, but.
We need high barrier. We, we need it all.
Well, and we've seen the success of, I mean, I, last time Lynn updated us about Veterans Village, the number of people graduating out of supported situations, these are, this looks like it's on the same path as success.
Yeah, I mean, the good news is, you know, these are incremental solutions without a doubt, but they work.
Yeah.
And we do have really good evidence of that and seeing folks move in, you know, more and more, I think, the houseless population is faced with both working and trying to maintain unemployment with very limited housing options. And so this really helps kind of boost that next level for some compelling audiences as well as the rest of, you know, coordinated entry. So really hopeful with this project to get it landed soon and get some good successes in place so that we can talk about the next steps.
So as said earlier, this is, this contract, Phase Two contract is going to come before council on October 5th. We had planned some time in the work session to go through this with the full council, but I would take your recommendation. We could also use the time to, to get feedback, as we, as you know, we're
Yeah.
working on the roundtable discussions, and I'm sure there's going to be a lot of feedback. So if, if the subcommittee is comfortable, we can just move right to the regular business meeting with the contract, unless you feel like the full council would benefit from, we can incorporate this.
This will be in the presentation.
Yeah.
But I think we can just remove that item from the work session.
Good.
It, it has to be in the meeting. It can't be in consent? Because Counselor Perkins could just talk about it.
Yeah, that's true. I think, um.
Yeah.
And sort of if it's.
It's a, it's a new, it's a new thing. I would prefer that this be in the regular meeting so that we could sort of provide some context to it.
And I think part of it is the neighborhoods heard that we were coming back to present this report. And so I feel like it's important for us to honor that they get a little bit of, of information as well and hear your discussion if there is any on sort of next steps. So that's really why is we want to make sure that the neighborhoods have the opportunity to say whatever they, they want at that time and that, that you all hear that directly, if that's all right. So.
Sure.
Yeah.
In future contracts, we may consider consent, but this is, this is a big one.
So, Robin, you can remove that item. And then also maybe just, I would include maybe public comments with this item, given what Lynn just mentioned too, just so that it's clear. And then that could be done in, right, all in one is with, with that item.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I gotta like hustle. Yeah, just to go get my kit on.
I don't think there's any.
Anything else, I don't think.
Updates.
It's going to be upset.
Want to do it at company?
Like flip the table.
All right.
Yeah.
So we better quickly move to our next.
Apology.
So Jeanette Townsend, Finance Director, pronouncer she/her, and I'm going to give you an update on the ARPA grant. We've got a presentation here. See if I can move it forward. There we go. So I have to put my glasses on.
It's in your packet. So we posted the presentation.
In your packet. Yeah, yeah. It's all fuzzy. So you guys are fuzzy. You're clear long-term, but, but shut up. So we've got, July was the last time that we had talked about this particular grant, and the updated allocation is in the middle column, that first column that says July 2022. So you can see kind of how, how we had allocated the dollars out, the total of 14.1 million that was received in funding. Some, as we worked our way through kind of the positions in particular, kind of positions and the eliminated positions, the estimates that we had for each of those line items have now solidified into kind of good kind of final numbers. We also have had an adjustment to the cybersecurity approach that was originally a position. So it was actually up in the, up in the new positions before. And, and IT has determined that a purchase of a software is more effective at this time for that particular line item. So we just called that out and shifted it down. They're, they're still evaluating whether kind of long-term they might end up adding a position. They're, they're still evaluating whether kind of long-term, they might end up adding a position, but we wouldn't fund it from this group, from this funding at this time. And then there was some discussion at last council meeting around envision bend. And I believe there's going to be an emotion or something coming next council meeting on October 5th. So we went ahead and called that out. That's that 80,000 there. And, and that leaves a little over a million in, you know, kind of reserves or unallocated, which we have a couple of slides on. Any questions before I dive into the positions piece? All right. So want to kind of level set, remind everybody what, what goes into, so these are the same kind of two columns, July 2022 for the line items of the new positions and then the restoring the eliminated positions. And then kind of again, where we settled out with, with where those numbers are landing today for September 2022. So you can see there's just been some shifting around and, and items moved. Any particular questions or line items? Want to dive into? All right. So wanted to give you an update too, actual spending, just the nature of some of these spends, it just hasn't, it hasn't all happened yet. So just wanted to say kind of what has actually been spent out through June, the June quarter here. And we can bring this back if it's meaningful on a, on a regular basis, but we certainly are. There's lots of action happening in all of these and, and dollars coming. And, and this is just kind of where we're spending right now. So lots of, lots of dollars in here around shelter fundings. We just wanted to give an update on shelter operations in particular. So there is, you know, a line item in particular, the four, $4 million on, on the previous slides that you'll see around shelter funding. And we believe that the ARPA funding, along with the non-ARPA grant fundings that we've gotten from several different sources, is anticipated to be sufficient to kind of fund shelter operations through the end of the current biennium. So through the June of 2023. We also have currently are anticipating that the, that $4 million will also be used to partially offset and fund shelter operations in the next, in the upcoming biennium. But we are at this point anticipating a shortfall right now from what we think the shelter costs are going to be in the next biennium. And we are actively pursuing additional funding sources.
A big part of that, just to connect the dots, is the, the mayor, and I know Anthony, you've said on those meetings as well, there's the Oregon Mayor's Association that's really helping to solidify the package for the next legislative session on sustainable funding. For, we're not alone. Many cities, you leveraged ARPA funds to, for Navigation Center, Project Turnkey, other efforts. So we're in need of state funding for sustainable operations.
Question? All right. So wanted to bring back to this group, the, kind of the reserve, the unallocated discussion. You might remember that we've negotiated, successfully negotiated all three of the labor contracts and that we wanted to bring back to you all what, what a recommendation might look like for the remainder of, of that kind of 1.1 million or so that's left in the unallocated amount. And we are recommending that that amount be transferred to the general fund here in, in, in this biennium to help offset the impacts of those increases.
I can't remember. Is that the full, is that the full amount that's in reserves or no?
It is the remainder of the amount.
Okay. So then we would be done with ARPA.
We would be.
I mean, it was intended, a lot of these sort of increased costs are certainly a result of the pandemic. So.
Agreed.
And that's the end of my
So I know we had, I, I know we, I kind of wanted to bring up that $70,000 downtown ARPA.
Yes, yes.
Can we make sure that, or is it?
You go back, if you go back, if you go back, it's in, it was, I saw it in your spreadsheet.
Yep.
It's downtown design.
Downtown design is listed as the 70,000.
Can we use, can we, is the idea we're going to do that when we are doing the, what we talked about, Ben?
I think part of it is really, to me, I was wanting to use that for some high-level connectivity to the Hawthorne Crossing project and really where to align Minnesota and potentially also, I mean, Oregon and then lava and all that area.
Definitely Minnesota.
Yeah, would be part of that. It would be a conceptual kind of design for that.
Do we have a timeframe on when, do we have to have this spent by 2024?
It needs to be
Allocated.
So that's something that we should expect to see in the next year or something?
Yeah.
Okay. And then one thing that didn't make it on there, but we had talked about, and I wondered if there was an update on the e-bike rebate, which I know other cities, did we get our grant for that?
So we will know the result of the grant in November. We just, I just asked this morning. We've put city sponsorship dollars, so they're non-ARPA dollars as a match for that. Majority of the funding would come from Pacific Power if awarded.
Okay, great. That's awesome.
Yeah, thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Director Home Strategies and Solutions.
So did you want to?
Yeah, I was just going to, so I know this subcommittee has been really kind of at the ground floor of our discussions that led, that led up to the legislation, the MOU or the IGA that we've signed with the counties. So we've, we thought it's only fair that we sort of closed the loop. And I know Counselor Mitchell, you weren't at the last council meeting where we introduced Cheyenne. We just saw briefly. But we thought we would just really bring Cheyenne here to answer any questions that you might have about the, as the office is getting set up. And then, you know, any, I think there's going to be some engagement happening as early as tomorrow with our roundtable. So Cheyenne will be attending the, our first roundtable with our boards, committees, commissions when we talk about the camping code that's under draft. So I just thought we would have a little time at the end of the meeting for, for you to interact with Cheyenne.
Welcome.
Action time.
Yeah.
I just want to say thank you to Mickey and for you lending Mickey. My first week, I didn't have my actual supervisor, so she was a great shepherd this week. Who was your supervisor? Nick.
Yeah, he's the county administrator.
Have you, I have to start using the right semantics for the office and for you.
Sure. So my semantics are Cheyenne Barrington.
Well, I mean, like
And the office, as far as I understand it, is Coordinated Houseless Response Office. That's what I'm sticking with. I think Executive Director is the appropriate title.
I had to write it down.
Collaborative joint. We will respond to all those names.
But for the sake of the community, it's good that.
The sake of the community, the office.
I like response in that.
Coordinated homelessness response.
Houseless response. HB4123.
Crow.
Crow.
Crow. I get into tribal politics. That's what I'm doing here. My name is already Cheyenne. It's confusing. And if you do have questions for me, I may put them off. I'm still forming what the office is going to be functionally doing.
Yeah.
I can tell you just from the first week and from what I'm hearing from folks, we're definitely going to be starting with data and capacity building and then obviously funding. But I think those are some initial strategies that we're going to be focused on.
Great.
I'm excited for your input tomorrow at the roundtable. Thank you for participating.
Yeah, there's a handful of projects that are already underway and the way I view the office is primarily supportive. We are not going to take a lead on programming, research, data, coordination, those are all supportive roles and not really adding more layers of bureaucracy and trying to remove them if anything. No clunky government. The worst.
We had a chance to start like meeting with other, like service providers and people doing the work.
Yep. I've actually seen the shelter sites that we're talking about and talked to some of the folks involved at those. I've been to all of the cities because it, as this office technically supports the, all of the cities and the county. And so my, my, one of my charges is to help everyone determine what the roles, responsibilities and relationships look like within the government response and then the nonprofit response as well and private. There's a lot of roles in here. So there seems to be some muddiness, I think, and that's normal. So we'll help kind of clear, clear some of those roles up. Yeah.
Is there, do you have a board meeting?
We haven't yet scheduled it, but I think that it is due to be scheduled.
Yes. Probably, yeah. So that's, that we, we've got an online checklist for her for, you know, first month, first quarter, first year. And the first quarter will have a board meeting.
Yeah.
I'm curious how it is picking your staff.
If you have the I believe I do. I'm not yet committed to hiring staff. I think that when I look at the budget that we have, I think the, some of the best use of that fund will be towards consultants. Not with the idea of, you know, consulting out all of the work, but the idea of bringing in special competencies to build capacity locally in places that we lack it, in development, service provision, that kind of professionalizing. Less is more. We're, we're certainly going to be looking at the strategic plan, which is a, I think, very dense document at this point, which is a compliment, but really taking what was everyone's best thinking and trying to ensure that it's also simple enough to understand and tracked towards impact and outcome, not just outputs. You know, we can meet all day, but that doesn't house people. So really focused on making sure that that plan is understandable, both internally and externally to the community. Any other questions? I'm happy to answer.
Yeah, I know.
I'll be back to this, you know, to this meeting and others with, you know, I'm very transparent around reporting, making sure that everyone's, you know, clear about what we're working on. We're also going to be providing a huge amount of technical assistance to all of the projects that are already underway. Heard about a few of them here, just making sure that they're supported.
Right.
May, may I say something?
Yeah.
May I embarrass some people and gush? So it's like full circle, fruits of your labor. And I don't think a lot of people know that the idea for this joint office, collaborative office, came from Mayor Pro Tem and Counselor Perkins. At the last city-county meeting, you said that you were pitching this to Commissioner DeBonne and the pro at a park. And then all of a sudden, here we are today. And then really committed and stand, standing for that all throughout until today. And then I, I call in my head Eric as the wizard, you know, the guy behind the scenes. You never see him, you never hear about him, but everybody just complains to him. But behind the scenes, he's been like, you know, orchestrating everything to make sure that, you know, we're equally respectful, doesn't matter whether you're from this left or this right or your role is this or that. And that we're including everybody and that we're not alienating every, anybody as we move forward. And that also we're working with velocity, like, you know, this is urgent, let's get the ball rolling. And then also making sure that we're inclusive. He's always course correcting. Are we inclusive with all the other cities? Council has been really appreciative in saying, we're, we're still moving forward if the other cities are not going to join us or the counties aren't going to join us. But we still committed to like having everybody joining us. And then now I'm in strong partnership with the county, with Nick Lealak and Eric Crop. We attracted some of the best candidates in, in the nation. And we have some, you know, a seasoned person that I learned last week when we were doing the meet and greet. Housing First is a nationwide best practice. That was something that she worked on 10, 20 years ago. Came out of San Francisco and now it's a best practice. And then the last thing I wanted to say is that because of the leadership, direction, commitment and stand, we have, where previously everybody was skeptical, we have hope and optimism and we have people working together. That you have people from left, right, law enforcement, business community, service providers, really welcoming her and ready to roll up their sleeves and work together. So we're all in this together and it's just so exciting. Fruits of your labor.
You're not giving yourself enough credit. Yeah.
It is very clear that Mickey carried a lot of the work with everyone's support.
Absolutely.
Very appreciative of having that much track lead. You know, I am not starting from any kind of scratch and I don't think that that would be useful. But I really appreciate all of that warm welcome and also hard work over the last year. I know that you're, you're on to new, new things, new assignments, but I appreciate that. And I will say, you know, I don't see this work. I know that in, in this community and others, it gets politicized. I don't see this work as political. It's, there's a lot of good evidence-based practices and data that we can refer to. We don't need to make policy decisions based on politics. We can use data and what we know works. So that's what we will be doing as policymakers. I, you know, respect you to keep your job. You be the politicians and I will bring you good policy so that you have, you know, you're armed with a toolkit to be able to solve the very complex issues that we're all facing. So if I can be of help, let me know.
Thank you.
Yeah. Thank you, Mickey.
Anything else, sir?
That was it.
Okay. Thank you, everybody.